I'd like to call to order the
Select Board.
Select Board meeting of June 12, 2023. This is an open meeting. It begins right here in room 304. This meeting is being recorded and we may or may not have to take votes depending upon if our fifth member attends via Zoom to be determined. If he does show, there'll be a roll call vote. At this point in time, please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people who stand one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as you honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Okay.
So he was gonna come tonight? Was gonna come here tonight?
No.
Okay. The warrant is gonna be signed at some point? Pass it through?
There is not one tonight.
There is one to be signed. Oh, there was not one tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
All our bills are paid.
We don't have any money.
We don't have, no, we don't have any bills.
You writing the checks too?
No.
Okay.
Well, we just sign the checks.
I'd heard the cash flow was good, but that's amazing. Okay, let's move on.
Try to wait till the last minute.
That should be the last time, by the way.
We have a one-day event, Teresa Street Inc. Whiffle Ball Tournament.
Two days.
Okay, that is incorrect.
It's a one-day license, we call it.
One-day license, excuse me.
It covers two days.
I'm gonna turn this over to our illustrious event planner, Mr. McDonald.
It's not me. I just.
Why don't you come on up?
Come on up.
Just state your name and organization.
Thanks, everyone. My name is Zach Westner.
Run to the mic.
My name is Zachary Westner. I'm the Vice President of Teresa Street, a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and I'm here to request the two-day liquor license on July 15th and 16th at Stackhouse Fairgrounds where we're gonna be holding our annual Whiffle Ball Tournament to raise funds for another local nonprofit organization called Dubedford Star Kids.
Can you tell me the date again, please?
July 15th and 16th.
Nice.
And are there tickets or is it just a?
It's free admission for everyone, yep, so you guys are more than welcome to come along.
How about teams playing?
We closed registration, I believe, last week. There's gonna be a record 16 teams playing this year.
Wow.
Up from 12 last year.
What did you guys do last year?
Money-wise? Money-wise?
Yep.
I believe we raised just north of $30,000. Yeah. We.
Fan duel?
Not yet. No, we're not that big yet. I wish.
Use the thick wiffle ball bats or the little thin ones?
The small yellow ones, but you can use tape on them.
Motion to approve.
Second half.
Okay, we have a, okay, see, Mr. Bracy's not on yet, so we have a motion, a motion and approval. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero, unanimous. One more time. When is it? Date?
July 15th and 16th.
Location?
Stackhouse Fairgrounds.
And for a great cause.
Great cause. Always is.
Thanks, Zachary.
Thank you, guys.
And you now have, you've now been approved and it's already done.
Okay.
Enjoy. Hope the weather's great.
Wheels of justice are really rolling.
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, okay.
Impressive.
Yep.
Okay, next. Appointment of Constable, excuse me, Constable Gordon Burgess. Gordon's here.
Oh, nice.
Please step forward.
Hi.
Hi. Name?
Gordon Burgess.
How long you been doing this, Gordon?
Thirty-four years.
Okay.
Nice.
Twelve to fifteen years for Dartmouth.
All the, all the necessary approvals have been made, so I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Excuse me. We can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I'm all set.
Do your job, right?
Thanks, Gordon.
Thank you very much. Next, we also have an appointment of Constable Louis Morales. Step forward, introduce yourself, please. Tell us about yourself.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Louis Morales. Thanks for the opportunity again to be in Constable. Keep doing it. I do enjoy doing it, so very happy to continue doing it.
How long you been doing it, Louis?
Since 2016.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like we have all the approvals from the appropriate people, so I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you, Louis, for your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
How long is it for?
One year.
One year, right. Okay.
He was here last year.
Okay, next. Next, we have appointments. I would make a suggestion. We have a whole list here and rather, would you like to read it through, Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay, what I'd like to do is read it through, announcing the commission and the person. Anybody has a comment or question? Maybe we'll do it like a hold, like we do at town meeting?
That's fine.
Any question, please speak up at that point.
All right, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make it as a motion to approve on the Agricultural Commission, Susan Guducci, on the Animal Control Officer, Sandra Goslin, for the Assistant Animal Control Officer, Stacy Rabelo-Hoddy, Tracy Martin, on the Assistant Harbor Master, Laurie Russell-Pelsu, on the Board of Appeals, Michael Maderas and Rahim Magai. Board of Public Works, Robert Almy. Capital Planning Committee, Luke Lehman, Christopher Frias. Conservation Commission, Richard Mallon and Patricia Swerinduck. The Cornell Pond Advisory Committee, Gloria Bancroft, Thomas Yenna, William Chandler, Michael Roy. Council on Agent, Eleanor White, Allison Nistansky. On the Dartmouth Tree Committee, Ruth Furman. Greater New Bedford Regional Refuse Management District Committee, Christine LeBlanc. The Harbor Management Plan Implementation Committee, Andrea Langhauser, Patricia Swerinduck, Roger Race. Historical Commission, Susan Guducci, Philip Baker. The Pathways Committee, Sandra Maderas. Russell's Mills Historic District, I will tell you why.
Okay.
Russell's Mills Historic District, Michael Walker, Michael Wachowski. Sister City Delegation Committee, Diane Kieltecker. Special Police Officers, Alan Shaw, Mark Zalinski, Howard Wong, Joseph Viera. The Veterans Advisory Board, Christopher Pereira, Peter Fusco, David Rucker, Joseph Toomey, Alan Cass. The Waterways Management Committee on what?
Waterways.
Waterways, okay, Kevin Murphy. All right. Reason why I skipped the Library Building Committee is because we're no longer needed.
We have disbanded.
It's been disbanded. We will make that afterwards.
Take a separate vote.
Yep. So there's a there's a hold on Waterways Management Committee.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes. We have, we have rules and regulations that we have to live by and consistently, consistently, Mr. Murphy does not pay attention to these rules and regulations. And it isn't just a one-time, one-time deal. It's been ongoing. And I find that it's just, the days of, I know a guy's gonna do something for you, those days are gone. I can't vote in favor of Mr. Murphy. I wanna thank him for his, for his time and, but I just can't vote for him.
Comments? Anybody else?
I, I've had a lot of dealings with Waterways, with the Harbor Management Plan and Harbor Master. And, you know, this government's tough to run, especially in the volunteer side, especially the giant town we are with a little small government. And a lot of things ago, you just don't like the process because it could be done in a short, a different way, but if it was a business setting, you just put people in the room, make a decision and be done with it. It doesn't work that way in town government. And as much as I appreciate Mr. Murphy's service, he's put his time in. I've had numerous, on a regular basis, issues that came along that try to over, to try to overrun or overrule what I would call just the rule of how we run our government. And it's frustrating for me and I have to share the same, same issue. I certainly appreciate his service, but I'm gonna vote against this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm a little perplexed. I am not aware of anything that Mr. Murphy has done. Nothing has been brought forward to this board as to anything that he has done wrong. So I'm I, to be honest with you, this is the first time in a very long time that this has occurred. So I'm not sure exactly what to do at this point in time. Well, I do. I I would prefer that Mr. Murphy come forward and you can either air, talk to him as to what it is, or find out what's wrong, or let people decide as to what he's done is wrong or right. I just, I, I, I don't know. So I.
At this point in time, I think we should remove the Waterways Committee from the main motion and then take it up as a separate motion. So I'm gonna make that motion to do that now? Because this, because to be honest with you, if we put the Waterways Management Committee on this, you guys are gonna have to vote for the entire motion. You're gonna have to vote no. And all those other people are not gonna get appointed.
Would you repeat the motion?
So my motion to amend the main motion is to remove the Waterways Management Committee and the Library Building Committee from the main motion of the approval of the committee members.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any opinion or discussions about that issue, that vote?
Well, I don't, I don't agree with you, Sean. The question is, is a reappointment for one individual, not the whole committee?
It's the other committee members because I made the main motion to read, to appoint the following people to the following committees. And I included the Waterways Management Committee. So you don't wanna vote for Kevin, you're also not gonna vote for the Pathways Committee, for the Conservation Commission, or anything like that. This was an all or nothing.
Right.
So I'm removing the Waterways from the main motion, so at least the other appointments can be made. That's what the amended, that's what the amended motion's for.
I'll vote in favor of that motion.
I think you can, you have to call for the vote.
Yes, no, I'm, I'm in favor. Before I vote, I agree with you.
And then we'll take the others two separately.
So the motion on the floor, whoever's second?
Second, yes.
Wait, wait a second. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to remove Waterways and Library from this vote.
Library Building.
Library Building Committee, excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Gudness. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none.
Oppose.
All other, okay, so now we need to go, at least vote on all the other appointments?
All right, make a motion that we terminate?
Abandon?
Disband.
Kill?
Disband.
Disband the Library Building Committee.
We have, hey, we haven't voted for the.
First have to vote for the other.
All right, all right. So, all right, so let's.
You have a larger group.
All right, so let's do the larger ones first.
We are able to vote because that, that motion has been voted on, right?
Yeah.
All in favor, just to clarify, voting for all these committees excluding Waterways and Library Building Committee, please say aye.
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 Opposed? I hear none. All those candidates for renewal have been appointed and the Library Building Committee has been dissolved.
No, the Library Build, no, we're gonna vote on that now.
Thank you.
I make a motion to dis, disband the Library Building Committee as it's no longer needed.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Thank you, Library Committee, for a job well done. And we have a beautiful North Dartmouth Library branch.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Kevin Murphy to the Waterways Management Committee.
Appoint?
Appoint.
Have a second on that? Here we go, second. I think we have a couple of options agreed. We can either vote tonight on that appointment, or we could consider having Mr. Murphy here to talk about the issues.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, by me.
And the, to get a sense of the committee chair, the direction of that committee. I know we've had some concerns about the committee itself.
Well, the question is, is it gonna be a twofold thing?
No, I think we need to just talk.
You either talk about, you either talk about the, the membership? And then at some point in time, the Waterways Management Committee, we could talk about something else down the line. So this is a neither or.
I would say we, we should limit this to one-on-one, one-on-one committee, one issue is with Mr. Murphy and his reappointment, period.
So if we bring Mr. Murphy here, I want to see actual data as to things that he's alleged to have done to not be appointed.
Fair enough. Do we need to vote on that?
To invite him to the next meeting? No, no.
Well, it has to be on the agenda. We don't have to vote?
No.
To put it on the agenda?
You can put it on the agenda.
No, no.
Just kinda continuing his reappointment.
Right.
Okay. Further comments?
No.
Moving on. Uh, do we have?
B is the Dartmouth Preserve.
Okay, okay, next will be the Dartmouth Preserve Regulatory Agreement Update.
So, as you know, this part of the Dartmouth Preserve 40B approval with the state is required to have an agreement with the town on the rental rates for the low-income units. Caris North, our 40B attorney, was here a number of months ago to establish the rental rates. The board had some questions about how the rates were established. They seemed high at the time. So the board asked Caris to go back and see what the process was to evaluate the rates and establish them. Caris North was unexpectedly delayed today. She, she may not be able to make the meeting via Zoom or in person. But Chris Vitale, the Assistant Town Administrator, is here to update the board on the process and what the rates are proposed.
So can I, excuse me, can I ask you, when was the, that, that meeting we had with her? Do you have a date?
I don't.
Been quite a while.
Yes.
And the reason disturbing to me is, where has she been all this time? I'm sorry she's not here. It's too bad.
She informed us this afternoon that she wouldn't be able to attend.
Oh, that's too bad. I'd like to know where she, where she's been for these months. Mr. Vitale?
So following up on the previous discussion that the Select Board's had, can you hear me? There we go. Good evening. Following up on the discussion that the Select Board previously had with regards to the rates at the Preserve, one of the things I've been working on with Caris over the last few weeks was to review some of the comps within the community, both affordable rates as well as market rates, just to get an idea of, you know, are the proposed rates in line with what's out there within the community? Was able to find a number of listings across different developments. What I found is the rates are being proposed here. One, they are in line with what DHCD recommends and what their formula is. It goes based off of HUD. So 80% of 80% AMI for the community. Now, one of the things that I did have to double-check for myself, because again, upon first glance, you know, that top number, the 1,700 and change, did seem high, but that also does include utilities. So with that.
Yeah, and that's also two bedrooms, as opposed to most stuff that's out there is, two bathrooms, I mean, most stuff that's out there is two bedrooms and only one bath.
Yeah, so.
For that same $1,700.
Yeah, and so with that, I'd say the difference between market and affordable is a few hundred dollars, you know, all-in. Now, some different developments, they'll advertise utilities included. They won't put utilities in. So you really have to do a little bit of digging to find exactly the one for one. But what I would say is, you know, the proposed amounts for the Preserve, I'd say they're in line with market. And I would add the caveat, and I did include that caveat in with the memo that Caris prepared, which is, right now, there's housing shortages everywhere. So with that being said, the rates across all the apartments are unusually high. And that's, you know, that's just the damage that we're in. So.
I also wanna note that the Preserve has a 25% of the units in the project are to remain affordable in perpetuity.
Correct.
Which I don't believe is something that the others have.
Yep, and they, yep.
I think that's important, that they will remain affordable, 25% of the units. I think that's important.
Yeah, I agree. Do we? So the, the board just needs to vote to adopt these rates for the year. Obviously, the development has not been constructed, has not started construction yet, so.
They need that to move forward.
They do need this with the state to move forward, definitely. And then they'll be back again in the future to establish the rates again.
Well, I thank you and Caris for putting this together, only because it did seem high to us. But now looking over Dartmouth Woods, Soluma, the residents at Lincoln Park, Ledgewood Commons, in alignment with the, with the proposed Preserve, puts it into a context for us that we didn't have previously.
So basically, this is a, this is a legal situation with a lot of red tape because the apartments don't exist and we're gonna vote again, and maybe even again, before it's even ready to.
Doesn't it come up every year?
Yes, yeah.
Right, so it's not like they're gonna hold these prices, who knows? They're not gonna go down, but.
This is a vote for right now, today, with no apartments to be occupied.
I make, I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Yes.
Three to one? In favor?
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale.
Okay, next. Thank you. Next is the DNRT Conservation. Next is the DNRT Conservation Restriction Request on Woodcock Road. Basically, the first time you've been before us, is that correct?
Here's a buddy.
Okay, so you, maybe you can also, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Maybe a little short bio, and just to tell you what you've been doing? Okay, great. Thank you. We may have a lot of this, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Nick Wildman, some of you haven't met before this evening, so it's nice to put faces with names finally. I've been the executive director of DNRT since last July approximately. And so this is my first time coming before you with a matter of actually two conservation restrictions on the agenda tonight. The first I'd like to tell you about is the Russell Mills Woods. This is a result of a CPC award that DNRT was granted for the purchase of two properties on Fisher Road. Because the CPC grant was used to acquire both properties, will be before you again with a CR on the other, known as the Solnier property. Both of these, these acquisitions were initiated before my time as executive director, of course, but they're both exceptionally valuable, both from a natural resources standpoint for Dartmouth, as well as for access to recreational opportunities. This is directly across Fisher Road from our Destruction Brook Woods property. And so this project was set in motion with the idea of opening the trails for users in, from town and from elsewhere who come to Dartmouth to walk and enjoy the woods. The details are included in the CPC grant agreement, which I believe you have seen prior to last October's town meeting vote, which ratified that, or I should say approved that, and was subsequently signed by DNRT.
So then, Nick, can you just clarify, so in the packet, there's the Booth property and the Marx property. And we've listed them in the agenda as Woodcock Road and Plainsfield Drive. And I know you've passed this out, but it doesn't really reference, reference the Booths property, not the Marx. Can you just clarify that for the board?
Yeah, I didn't wanna rush to the next one. Booth property is the Woodcock Road property. It's between Fisher and Woodcock Road, thanks for clarifying that. We're extremely grateful to be able to partner with CPC, of course. CPC provided two-hundred-and-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars toward the acquisition and costs. DNRT was able to raise through our own private funding the balance. Total project costs were about five-hundred-thousand dollars for acquisition due diligence and the opening costs. We're looking forward to opening the property on July thirteenth, so keep your radar open for invitations to that event as well. But really, the CR is important for us because it's DNRT's policy that our acquisitions, whenever possible, be doubly protected. So DNRT protects the property in perpetuity, of course. But just like the Paradise Farm CR, which is located the parcel just to the south of this, having that second layer of protection is really important to us for doing what we wanna do.
I believe there was some concern from folks that this property abuts the firing range. So on the map, where is the rain, the firing range?
Russell Street.
Yeah, it's completely separated by Woodcock Road, thankfully.
Okay.
Quite, quite distant.
Okay.
But it is in that neighborhood, yeah.
It's near the bend, correct?
That's correct. I should say that the CR was reviewed, was created, was initially drafted based on the Paradise Farm CR, which was done the prior year, I believe that was twenty-twenty-one.
So this just goes like this?
Received the town attorney's input prior to going to the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs for review, and again afterward, when we received the, the review from EEA lawyers.
Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion to.
So you, you, I just wanna, I have some questions again. So you will enter this property from Woodcock Road, now that I've got the map turned correctly, I, now I'm seeing it. Which would be the Sonia property?
Actually, you'll enter from what had been known as Paradise Farm from Fisher Road side.
Oh, okay.
If you go down Fisher Road now, you'll see we've completed the parking lot there. And so the trails all exist there, as, as you may know, this was a, a summer camp for some years prior to
Oh my gosh, yeah.
The Booth and Solnier families acquiring it.
Anything else you wanna add, Nick?
Nope, happy to take any questions.
Questions, anybody?
Now I see it.
Are we ready to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second it.
A second? Any questions, discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That one's approved four-zero. Next would be the DNRT Conservation Restriction Request on Plainsfield Drive.
I'll try to get my map correct this time. Straight off.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. As some of you know, the approval of conservation restrictions at the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs has taken a historically long time, and probably the Mark CR is in the running for the champion, I imagine. I hate to think of other folks having a longer review period. This was initiated in twenty-twenty-one, as you can see here, Dr. Marx reached out to DNRT about placing a CR on this undeveloped parcel that he and his family own. This, despite being extremely small, only three, three acres, it's actually quite important in terms of habitat and, and open space connectivity. As we all know from various sources, climate change resilience and other things facing our town, having protected properties in connection is such an important part of that. And as you can see on the map, this property, though small, provides an additional link between some of the already protected properties, either through APR at the Brownell Farm or DNRT-related properties. It's an exceptionally, despite being small, it's also exceptionally strategic due to the wetlands on the adjacent parcel and the location of a potential vernal pool or a wet area near to the road. Effectively, what this means by protecting this, this parcel, because of the extensive wetlands on the adjacent, we're able to, in concert with the town's wetland bylaw and with the State Wetland Protection Act, really protect this corner of Plainsfield Road with one, with one instrument, with one donation here.
Ties it all together.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
I'll move to accept this conservation restriction request for Plainsfield, Plainsfield Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, four-zero. Anything else, Nick?
I look forward to working with you, thank you very much.
Great job.
Yeah.
All signed.
Yep.
That one is, not the second one. This one's done?
That one's also.
Okay, next, DPW Water and Sewer Utility Rate Update. Do we have?
Good evening, Tim Barber, Director of Public Works. Just here to see if the board has any further questions on, on the water and sewer rate increase. We're still looking at a possible eight percent increase in water and around a five percent increase in sewer. We'll be discussing that at our board meeting on Thursday morning. You know, other than all of our increases in, in services and chemicals and vendors, you know, the city of New Bedford has also increased in their rate, the water rate to us by eight-point-four percent.
Eight-point-four?
Eight-point-four.
We've gotten that already?
And, and six-point-four in sewer.
So you're, so you're gonna vote to make a final decision?
Yes.
On Thursday?
On Thursday, yes. So then we can send out notices with the bills.
I know that we were shocked last year when we heard the increases, and again, hearing the increases this year is unsettling. However, in your previous presentation, you showed that there were a number of years where there were no increases. And hindsight being twenty-twenty, we probably wouldn't have been so shocked had we had minimal increases at that time. Maybe we could have continued with those small increments as opposed to what seems to be these household budget busting.
Typically, you'll see a three-to-four percent increase in, I think, you know, with the inflation and with the, all the increases, it's, it's forcing a lot of municipalities to, to really increase their rates. I've seen twenties-to-thirty percent increases. It's, it's pretty disheartening. We're, you know, we have a, a large forecasted capital ahead of us in both water and wastewater. So we do wanna make sure that we have enough in our retained earnings to, to work on these projects. I know most of them we will have to borrow for, and, you know, the opera funds that we're planning to use for this year's capital won't be, won't be around in fiscal twenty-five, so.
Well, further along this agenda, we're going to try to address that issue with our long-range capital plan, so.
Absolutely.
And DPW will be on top of the list.
Right, so that, you know, with the, with the extra borrowing, our debt continues to increase as well, so those payments go up.
Could you repeat again what the water rate and sewer rate increase will be?
We're, we're proposing eight percent water, five percent sewer. I will also try to meet one last time with the financial director as well, this week.
We need to vote on.
And it's not, as it turns out, it's not our board that approves and sets that, it's your board on Thursday morning, correct?
Correct.
Again, if we, if we divide this by how many years that we never did raise?
There were three years that we had zero percent, yeah.
If we were to put that in, in the formula, the, the eight and five wouldn't be eight and five.
Correct.
Mr. McDonald?
Just catching it up.
I, I understand the thought process behind that, but it's still an eight and five. So it doesn't, you know, whether you say we didn't do anything, you know, this year, that year, this year, it's still eight and five on currently. So, um, the testing that gets done on the system, it's, is, it's a quarterly testing, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay. How many quarters have passed coming from today that we have not had a violation?
Do you have that?
This Frank. Just to, Mr., hi Frank, just to, Mr. Chairman, just to let you know that all votes from this point on time has to be roll-call votes.
You hear us, Frank? Excuse me, Tim.
What's up?
Excuse me, Tim.
Frank Gracie.
You hear us, Frank?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna vote from here on in, we'll do a roll-call individual vote. Thank you, good, sorry, Tim.
So I believe the last violation was in January or March of twenty-twenty-two?
So we've gone a solid year without any kind of violation notices, according to testing, the testing guidelines that are set by Mass DEP and the EPA, correct?
Correct.
So in other words, we didn't get any of those funky notices because of somebody having, because of one part of the system, specifically Reed Road, having a little bit of a problem, and the DPW has worked diligently these last sixteen months to make sure that no violations have occurred, correctly?
Absolutely, absolutely, and since we've, so since February, we've stopped purchasing as much water from the city when our Violetta Wells went back online, and we were able to produce most of our water in-house, and our numbers actually went down further since that.
That's even better. All right, um, which, basically, this, this is what, what I'm trying to do, is I'm not, anytime that we have a rent increase, you get a certain segment, you get a certain amount of people or basically complaining about the water, the water quality. So one of the biggest things that we've had over a period of time were these notifications of, whatever the hell it was, TCMs, TDL, whatever that.
Yeah, it was trihalomethanes and halicetic acids.
Okay. As, as violations, so we have not had a violation in over sixteen months, and, sixteen months, yeah, sixteen months, seventeen months. And, so, and we've had two wells come back online, so that Dartmouth's water supply purchasing has been reduced from New Bedford somewhat. Not a whole lot, but somewhat. And the town is currently working on to getting other wells back online.
That's correct.
And there's a flushing program going on now to make sure our lines are, the lines going to the, at least feeding the households are clear. There are, but there is some acknowledgement that sometimes there are some cloudiness or discoloration in the water due to the flushing, and maybe that if anybody has a problem with discoloration, they should contact the water department. The water department will go out and take a look at what the issue may be. It might be the supply line, it may be the house supply line.
Yeah, and sometimes they can flush it out through the house, sometimes it'll be a low-flow flush through a hydrant nearby.
Okay, all right. I'm just setting this up because generally, as soon as it hits social media, there has to be some kind of explanation out there for everybody. All right.
We've also taken our storage tank off of Old River Load, offline. It's a three-million-gallon storage tank that was in place mostly for the energy plant, which isn't using water to create energy unless the solar's not working.
Right.
So they don't need that extra storage at this time, so that's offline, which is helping the water quality up north as well.
Okay, so, so basically, all in a nutshell, the water that the town at Dartmouth supplies is good water. It's drinkable, it's potable, it's usable, you can wash in it, you can bathe in it, you can drink it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I think if you're gonna raise prices, you better have a quality product.
Right, and our, and our, our first step towards, in our capital planning, is to add some extra infrastructure to increase the water quality as well, as well as the resilience and sustainability to climate change and to increase heavy rainfall events, to protect our wells and, and our treated water.
But it also should be noted that water quality guidelines issuances are fleeting and they're forever, they're ever-changing.
They're forever-changing and getting stricter, and there are more and more restrictions.
And each time there's a community out there like Flint that basically bungs up the work, that gets everybody, then more regulations are passed and more, more of these guidelines are, are increased to meet, so that situations like that don't occur.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Through the, through the EPA and, and through the DEP, the local state.
Worth noting that going forward, we have a lot of work we're doing studying our water, our sewer system, and our, our whole structure in DPW.
Absolutely.
Great. I always wanted a quick announcement, Mrs. Brooks had made arrangements that she was leaving at quarter of seven for granddaughter's activity, very important, so she has exited the premises. We have Mr. Gracie on hands, so we're at four on the team, uh, three is a.
Fifth grade recognition night.
What's that?
Fifth grade recognition.
Fifth grade, okay, oh, fifth grade.
Milestone.
Yes, it is. Okay, so you've informed us on the water, we've made a preliminary announcement to the public who may, may not be listening, and you're gonna make a final, go through, working with our Director of Finance to make a final decision on Thursday, because this is it.
This is it.
July one's around the corner.
It is, absolutely.
And if the fourth estate is here listening, my suggestion would.
And if the fourth estate is here listening, my suggestion would be for the fourth estate to give you a call to get the information.
Final.
Correct. And also needed as, you know, it's a good story. It's a story I'm sure that, you know, will be well-written as long as the facts are factual.
Absolutely. You're correct.
Any other comments, Mr. Bob?
Well, that's it for tonight.
Anybody else?
You've done enough. Thank you.
All right. Have a great night.
Next.
I feel like getting you some popcorn or something. I mean, you're just sitting there calmly. I'll give you some popcorn. I don't have anything.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a two-minute?
Two minutes?
Yeah. I have to get something in my car.
Oh, okay. Three minutes? Okay, we're going to.
Make it into?
Right back.
We need to just.
Just don't jump out the window.
We are going to pause for three minutes for Mr. Mickelson's return.
Yep.
Next on the agenda, Arthur F. Dias Landing Upon Against Point Parking Draft MOA. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, so as part of the Marina, Small Boat Marina Dockage Facility that is being designed under the Waterways as part of a Seaport Economic Council grant, the town is required to have a twenty percent match on funding. It was applied for with the Community Preservation Committee to request the $200,000 in matching funds. The Community Preservation Committee has awarded those funds to the town for the design and construction of the small boat dockage facility. One thing they had requested was a memorandum of agreement between the park board and select board via the Harbor Master and Waterways Committee on an agreement on parking usage of the facility because it's shared during the concert season on Wednesday nights. So in the, in working with the Park and Rec Director and the Harbor Master to develop a memorandum of agreement, we've included that in your packet. It formalizes basically the existing arrangement for shared parking on Wednesday nights. And it allows for parking for concertgoers, but as well as maintaining some space for boats and trailers as per the agreement with Division of Marine Fisheries in the access agreement. In return, Park will continue to mow the grass on the Arthur F. Dias Landing side of the site and clean up trash and debris after the concerts. So this is, still needs to be approved by the Park Board, but like I said, I've worked with the Park and Rec Director and the Harbor Master. They're both in agreement on it. It's being presented to the Park Board tomorrow. I'm meeting with the CPC tomorrow to update them on that, that this is a draft, but it'll be on a future agenda once it's finalized for the Select Board to approve and vote on. But I just wanted to include it in case there's any questions before I meet with CPC tomorrow.
All right, well, the only question, actually, the only comment I have is on the second page under number two. It's just, it's Arthur F. Dias.
Oh, look at that. Tango.
This will ultimately be signed only by the Park Board?
It'll be voted on by the Park Board and it'll be voted on by the Select Board and then signed off by me and the Park and Rec Director.
And does not have to involve the Waterways and the signature?
Waterways is, Park Board's elected, Waterways is appointed by the Select Board, so the Select Board needs to enter into the agreement.
Thank you. What a way to do business. Any other comments on this? Hoping that this will close the, close the door and finish up this issue. Are you mowing the lawn first or who's that going to?
Yeah.
Okay. We all set on this one?
Yes, David.
Just, Sean, the signatories below the average acknowledge and aver. The last, with the signature page.
Oh.
Aver.
Acknowledge. You haven't heard that before?
No.
I don't know where that came from. I'm pulling it up now to make the edits.
I mean, they're just, they're just.
I'm just reading it and it's like.
This is why we have a review.
You got to change that Dias thing too, right?
Yeah.
On two?
This document's had enough attention.
Yeah, while we're talking about agreements. While we're talking about agreements, do we have to sign that regulatory agreement?
I don't think, I think we just need a letter. The board voted, so I think it's just a letter to them.
So when are you going to send it out?
This week.
Okay.
Okay, can we move on from the Dias Landing? Please, can we? I'm begging you. Okay, good. Thank you. Next, Long Range Capital Planning Committee, committee charge. This has been in the works over the last sixty days or so, or longer. Way back when, we had discussion here at the meeting, at our meeting, and I had met with a couple of members of FinCom, Mr. Brooks and Mr. Carrero about getting together and looking at long-range planning in a different way. We had our meeting, joint meeting, open with the, with the Finance Committee, School Committee and our, and our committee and our board. And this is what we have come up with as to what plan this will, this committee is charged will be, as we've got it here written, will be to look at long-range planning on a one, two, five, and ten-year basis to look at and prioritize the key and most important issues in town, the ones that have been either looked at once in a while or never, or kicked down the road, and the ones that have critically important, water, sewer, how we fund our schools, how we pay our employees, et cetera. This to be determined and presented back to the board. The charge is here. I guess I would ask questions on the charge itself and any comments? I don't think we need to read it through, but comments or questions?
Select Board on quarterly basis meeting. Seven members, all right. Project Finance.
What's that?
The comments that you just made regarding, you stated that it was one, two, five, twenty, whatever. Long range is not a one-year thing because we have a capital.
Yep.
We have a capital committee for one and five-year plans. So this, this committee really would be looking at long-term over a period of five years plus. So it would be looking at maybe a five-year or something, ten-year, twenty-year, twenty-five year thing, correct?
Yes, the one and two would only be to find out, you know, where we sit with that issue, where is it short-term?
It should dovetail with the capital planning committee.
Hundred percent, that's why I mentioned it, because we can't look at five without knowing what's going on with one and two.
The other thing is you said something about paying the employees. That's not capital planning. That's financial planning.
It is.
And that would not be in the purview of this committee. Should not be in the purview of this committee.
Well, I would, may or may not agree or don't agree, I think that this.
I mean, let's put it this way, if you were going to say that we were going to build, you know, twenty years, the town would want to build the building of widgets and whatnots, and we need to fund it, then yes, I would say in order to fund the operations of the building of widget and whatnots, that this is how we intend to do it, whether it be fee-based or whatnot. But to say that, you know, we need to take a look at how we're going to pay, you know, well, since the DPW's here, how we're going to pay, you know, the DPW guys, that's not in the purview of a long-range capital planning committee.
Well, I think that the problem we've had, and I agree with you, this is, capital is much, obviously, much, much more separated from how we spend our money on a day-to-day expense basis. But how we spend our money on a day-to-day basis has a major effect and has had a major effect on the capital planning, which has been put aside for so many years that we now need to regroup. But I don't think we can be blind in this charge as to what we're spending and what we're going to have to spend to keep good employees, whatever. I'm not abdicating any issue, but I think there's a blend there. And is this committee going to be charged of how we pay employees? Not at all. But in terms of how much, what the percentage of we spend on payroll for teachers and for town workers and where that's going to go in the future is the problem we've had. And I think we just can't live anywhere in this silo of just not looking at it in the total picture.
Well, I mean, you know, I know, and the variation as to the percentage of staff versus expenses, generally, the school department runs at eighty percent of their budget is staff. The town runs roughly the same amount. That eighty percent of the town's budget is basically employee-based, and then the rest goes to the expenses, with the exception of the enterprise funds. That's an entirely different thing. But overall, the budget, if you take a look at the employee, you need people to run government. So we know that when you have a school system, that anywhere from seventy-five to eighty percent of that budget is going to be personnel-based. It was that way when, when I was on the school committee, and I'm sure it's still very close to that figure now. And I would be very surprised if it was less. Same thing with the town budget. The town budget generally runs around a seventy-five to eighty percent personnel-based. So we know that anywhere down the line, if for every dollar we spend, eighty cents is going to an employee.
I don't know if that eighty cents is right or it's wrong.
It's pretty close.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not accurate. I don't know if going ahead, is that, that formula is going to work any longer because the problem is we have issues about, the world has changed. How we pay people, the benefits we pay has changed. And I'm not looking for this committee to be involved in setting benefits or setting payroll. What I'm looking at is to what we spend in general for payroll versus what we have to spend on, on long-term plans. It's not working.
I understand that.
And how can we live in a, and if it means this committee is going to bring in others who work on this every day to present some kind of, I think without this kind of thinking, we're going to be kicking these cans down the road on a insane basis, and we're not going to be able to look at the overall picture.
I just don't want, I just don't want to see the capital planning committee get wrapped up in something that really is not what they should be doing. That has to be strictly, you know, that's the financial planning committee, you know, and that should be their billywick. This, this purpose here should be, let's looking at, you know, let's look at the infrastructure of the DPW. Do we need to, can we expand, you know, the sewage treatment plant? You know, is there, is there a new school in our future? You know, what is, you know, you know, is eventually the town hall going to be, you know, with, with everything going online and everything being done online, is this building actually too large that, you know, do we need to downsize? You know, or do we need to upsize because we need to bring more people in? Should, should there be a, you have two major departments in town who live in the, one of the oldest, who work out of one of the older buildings, the oldest buildings in town? You know, you have the school department and Bush Street, you have, you know, does it make sense to have Bush Street and the town hall work together in the same building? You know, so that's the type of decisions that we have to make. You know, the other thing we have is the Pedenham Bridge. We have, you know, a whole bunch of other things.
The other thing is, you're talking about things that, you, we don't have an awful lot of land. The town does not own an awful lot of land.
That's part of that.
So that, that's something that we need to look at. Do we want to look forward to a building, a smaller building on property that we own for a town hall because of what Sean's mentioned?
I'm going to say to you this.
But I think the long range of the, you've got the bridge, you've got a lot, a lot of, a lot of money that we're going to have to spend.
I don't want to do the work of this committee because it's going to take a real look at all these different things we mentioned. But all I know is if we don't look at water and sewer and treatment in a way like we've never looked before, it's going to take, gobble up a ton of our budget and where we spend money over the next five and ten years. And the other things are going to have to fall below that because they're important, and I'm not saying they're not, but prioritizing those issues, knowing that the water and sewer is on the absolute top of the list.
We understand that.
Yep.
But you also got to understand too, is that even though, even though water and sewer is tantamount, it's still only a certain percentage of the entire town, you know, because there's not, not the entire town has water and sewer municipal-wise. They have their own systems. So, I mean, there's a balance here. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to focus immediately on a certain percentage segment of the town. You want to, you want to make sure that the overall town is looked at, and that's the entire town has to be looked at. Now, when people say, well, you know, they're only looking here, looking there, you know, but it's still the entire town. Pedenham Bridge is the entire town, although it's in Pedenham, that's because that's where it was put, okay? You have no choice. That's where it was put. You know, schools, I mean, we have, we have two elementary schools that were built in the fifties. We have another elementary school that was built in the sixties. We have a high school that, a middle school that was started in the fifties, that was added on to in the eighties, and that was added on after that. And then we have a high school, the newest school that we have, you know, that was built over twenty years ago. And you also have a preschool which goes way back to like nineteen twenty, nineteen eighteen or something like that, Cushman. So, I mean, we have some very old buildings here. This isn't, this building was built in the, in the early nineteen hundreds, you know, and it was, it was sitting here doing absolutely nothing, rotting away, until Charlie Lawrence said, hey, let's turn this into a town hall, and we looked into it. And this is where we are today. So we, you know, we, luckily, we revitalized this building, but we've also been here forty years. You know, we've been here close to forty years, you know, so, I mean, you, we have to focus on the capital needs of the entire town, which does include water and sewer issues. That's part of the picture. But we, we can't just say we're only going to, you know, we're going to start looking at it because it's most important. It is most important, there's no doubt about it. But the Pedenham Bridge is important. Our, our, our roads that need to be resurfaced are important, you know, our water lines are important, our, our infrastructure is important, our culverts that are in certain roads where, you know, that we've replaced that it needs to be done here and there is important. We have a dam over on Copacabana that needs to be addressed. We have the Lake Nokachoke stuff that we're still dealing with the City of Fall River with, you know, different things.
This committee's charge is to set those priorities.
Right, and that's, that's, that's what I'm looking for out of this committee is to set capital needs. needs. The sidebar issues as to funding can go with that, but that's also with bringing in another committee, that's all.
I agree.
I'm not trying to rail the, I'm not, trust me, I'm not trying to derail this. I just try to wanna make sure that the focus is pretty much on target as to where that should be.
Well, they're gonna report to us on a regular basis and we'll see. That's the job. Any other comments on this? Do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the long-range, uh, long-range capital planning committee char, as charged, as submitted in our packet.
Second.
Second. Any comments, questions? Mr. Gracie, any comment or question before we vote?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna vote on a roll call basis. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, four zero. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, next is the Maderas versus Hickox settlement. Mr.?
Uh, yes, so this is presented to the board previously to discuss the settlement between Joshua Maderas and Dave Hickox's on behalf of the town. The board worked with our town council attorney, Savistano, and agreed to the settlement previously in executive session. This is the formal settlement that the board needs to vote on in an open session.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, four zero, unanimous.
We have to sign this, right?
Mm-hmm.
Ah, yes, there you go.
Okay. Next. Town administrator update.
Uh, yes, not a lot since last week, but, um...
It's only seven days.
Uh, we accomplished town meeting, it went relatively well. We were able to approve a number of projects and articles, so we move on to next year. Uh, one item, we've started pickleball court construction, uh, one on the regional park and one on Slocum Road. Uh, one item of note, the, the Slocum Road site is memorial, uh, with a basketball memorial, so the, the stone has been removed to do the construction. It will be replaced once the construction is done. Um, and there will be a basketball court remaining, if people don't remember so, but pickleball ports, pickleball courts will be added. Uh, some good news of DPW left, but, uh, D, the county, Bristol County, has approved two DPW ARPA projects that were submitted. Uh, the sludge filter press for six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and SCADA upgrades for the water and sewer for a hundred and sixty-five thousand, so those projects will start to move forward.
Those are from the original ARPA funds?
Those are from what was approved by the board last year.
Right.
So the process to apply for the funds through the county to get reimbursed is long.
But the idea that we applied with shovel-ready projects and got it done is...
Oh, not shovel-ready, but, well, part of its design, but...
Uh, design-ready was the right way to go, because it did get approved.
Correct, yes. And that's, uh, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the town does not have to expend for these projects, so that's excellent.
Thank you.
Uh, the, the community services outreach team has updated their street sheet pamphlet. It's in the select board's packet. Uh, the pamphlet's been pretty successful and informative. They hand it out to people in need as they travel around. It's been, uh, well utilized, so the town's gotten a number of phone calls.
Can I actually, uh, just as, this is a question on that. This seems to be taking a life of its own as far as, um, the work being involved. Would it be, would it be fiscally responsible for the town to start having this group have its own budget?
Excellent question. So we've discussed that. Uh, so we are gonna present, um, a new model for FY twenty-five, uh, for the community services, uh, because, you know, we have a number of staff that are overlapping and providing, you hear me talk about this a lot.
Correct.
They're really going above and beyond. So we wanna formalize that in more of a fashion, so that we can have more staff providing broader support. So for FY twenty-five, we'll be presenting, uh, something that I think the, the board will be appreciative of right along those lines with the budget.
Would it be also, um, would it also make, would it also be logical that the position of the youth advocate be enveloped into this as more, not so much as a youth advocate, but as a town advocate?
Correct. So what, you know, it's, we've talked about it, we probably, we will do that. Follow, follow more, follow more of a model of a community services department and town division that, you know, encompasses council on age, youth advocate, veteran services. So, wow, but exactly that.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause one of the things that, one of the things that, you know, and I, and I think this is a great thing, but one of the things I don't wanna see is, um, one department, you know, having its funds necessarily, you know, being siphoned off for this, where they should have their own budget.
Right. I agree. Yeah, so we're looking at that, yes, we agree a hundred percent.
Well, the youth advocates deeply involved in this budget.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. But, you know, she's a youth advocate. She's, you know what I mean? But it, it's...
Yeah, but we all know she's more than that.
Right, we all know that. We know she doesn't, we, right, that's more.
She's working at it, is that.
Right, right. But now I'm just saying, you know, maybe it's time for us to get with it, so that, you know, the, the, the name of the, the name fits the job. Because right now, the name doesn't fit the job.
No, she does a lot more than just that.
She does a lot more.
There's no question about it.
I agree, so it's worth formalizing the roles and responsibilities.
And I also, I also think, and credit Sean back in the beginning, that his vision of that position was one that was gonna be more of what it's turning into, as opposed to being the youth advocate.
But we all, we all realized that was gonna happen.
So we're moving that way.
Especially with the, with a good person like she is, very qualified. Um, she's, she's really not surprised anybody.
I, I attend most of those meetings, and, and what Mrs. Brooks has been doing to input the, her, her strength and knowledge and passion for this subject is really unbelievable.
We're very fortunate.
She works well with the Morris and the whole group.
Yes, yeah, definitely.
And, you know, and I said it before, even just...
No, it's good.
In the Fire District Three, Aruda's involved, and it's such a nice thing that police involved in the fire. It's really an amazing, amazing.
Yeah, it's great.
They're all doing it on their time.
All right, yes.
Okay.
Um, and last is, uh, we just wanna thank the Dartmouth Friends of the Elderly. They're covering the cost to Lowman Seed, the COA property on the southeast corner along Dartmouth Street. That was cleared a few weeks ago.
You gonna have any extra loan seed?
I don't, I don't.
You gonna think so? Probably not?
Uh, okay. And that's all I have.
They can play croquet.
Yeah, a couple of years. Not right away.
And then under old business, um, bliss's corner, no new updates, same like Nokachoke, a miserable broadband study, you saw that last week, and, uh, Mass D E P, the Title Five amendments, no new updates there yet.
There's no minutes?
Just to let you know, um, once again, I called the governor's office and I received no response.
Okay.
Keep calling.
Yep.
Do we...
If someone answers, uh, what will you, what will you do?
Nobody answers, you, you get, I...
You're gonna fall down dead?
Probably.
Title III, if you elect the governor.
We're gonna ask him.
Look, you don't. The, as far as Title V is concerned, um, I know, uh, we listened to that advisory board meeting a while back, and they certainly indicated that they, they're willing, that my, my take on it was that they were, understood that maybe they were, their, their, their choice to bunch us in with a cape may have been quite premature, and they're gonna look at it and take time to do it. But do we expect some kind of a, a time?
Uh, what, they did not specify in the meeting. That was one thing people were curious about, that they didn't have an opportunity to ask. So we monitor the site. We're looking for a posting of their next meeting. Well, we'll certainly get the work out.
Not in any big hurry right now.
Pardon me?
Yeah, not in any big hurry right now.
Yeah, certainly, the cape is...
They have a court, they have a court guideline that they have.
And the cape issues are higher on the list than the town of Dartmouth.
Exactly, yeah, but don't forget, when a state agency makes a set of rules and regulations, that rules and regulations fit the entire state.
I understand.
It's not, this is not the Cape and Islands Title V regulations. This is the Department of Ma, Department of Environmental Protection for the State, Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations, and that fits everybody.
Well, I'm, I'm hopeful that they'll stand by their word, that they're gonna, they're gonna give us a, a re-look, but we'll see.
You, you are, you are very optimistic, David. You're a product of the sixties.
Thank you.
I love it, but...
Meanwhile, we're gonna forge ahead. It's not the sixties. Meanwhile, we're forging ahead with composting and the rest of it to go.
Correct.
You skipped over the sixties, we're right to the nineties.
Uh, it's not even that, or...
Next.
Okay, we're back to the two thousand twenty's. No minutes, is that correct?
Correct, no, we'll have those for the next meeting.
Anybody from the select board have anything they want to say?
I sure do.
Except for Mr. Mickelson.
He's the sign guy.
This is your, your dear friend.
Your advertising.
On the select board. I'm gonna do it little by little. Uh, pardon me. So this, gotta stop. Signs this size on our property.
That's annoying.
They've stopped. No more of it. If anybody sees, if anybody in town...
Take him down.
See, take him down on your own. Signs like this, and it's a professional operation, gotta go. Gotta go, anybody with, I'm sick and tired of people taking advantage of our property advertising their businesses. I, I would hope that anybody that sees signs like this to never to do business with them ever again.
And be sure that...
Take them down.
Be sure this is public property.
I've had it, and I've called the, the, Joe Bragger, and Joe Bragger's gonna be out there pulling signs. They've got them now, they've found out, they've, they've got nails about, about the size of a silver dollar, they're hammering into telephone poles.
Yeah. We buy houses.
We've had it, no more. We're gonna start issuing fines.
I took one down the other day, Miss...
Mosquito gang.
Mosquito guys.
Yeah.
That was a, fifth demonstration, Mr. Mickelson, thank you.
You're welcome.
Take, you see him, take him down. Just make sure it's public property.
Yes. Jeez.
Anybody get hurt up here? Are you all right? Sean, you okay?
I'm fine, I almost got hit by a sign.
Ray, did you get anything over there? No? Yes, sir?
Just to, just to let you know, I will forward to, um, Mr. McGinnis later this week. There's a youth group that won the, um, won some, uh, what was it? Sorry, it seemed to have lost my train of thought, that derailed. Uh, let's see.
You mean my sign outreach got to you?
Some girls, some girl, um, a girls' basketball team won a championship, and, um, I have the names of the players and the coaches, um, that we can get some kind of certificate for, and then maybe the next meeting, just have the coaches come up.
Great.
The girls don't have to come. Just the, you know, the coaches that we can hand them the certificates.
Yeah.
If they wanna show up, that's up to them.
Well, how many are there?
Uh, I believe there's at least nine, ten.
Oh, they can come.
So, well, you know, something's, summer starts. I don't want, you know, when you were a kid, you remember way back when, right?
They, they're, when I was, when I was a kid...
When summer, when summer came out, you know, you, and you wanted to be free for a little while until...
They hadn't invented plastic.
Well, they hadn't invented the horse or the wheels yet, so, um, so I was just checking.
Anything else, Mr. McDonald?
No, even Doc Agai's younger than you.
Yeah?
No, that's it.
Mr. Gracie, anything you want to say?
Oh, I'm enjoying the show.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
I would just, I got one thing I'd like to say.
You know, he had to say something.
I, I'm, I'd like to leave the signs up. Our town is going, be going through some critical issues over the next two and five and ten years, and we rely on volunteers. And rely on rules of meetings that require open meeting laws and all kinds of rules and regulations. If you wanna step forward in the interest of serving some of these committees, we really could need the effort and the help to stay with it, because, uh, we're gonna require more and more assistance and more and more staff and volunteers, because, um, uh, the, the issues become bigger and more critical. We do intend, um, down the road, I'm working with Mrs. Brooks, actually, to, uh, consider a, um, a couple of lessons about the open meeting laws and bring in maybe someone from MMA to, to instruct our chair, our chairs of different committees and boards as to what the open meetings are, because they are changing quickly and they're changing to be more difficult, uh, and, um, we need to make sure we address that as well. But if you're out there and you wanna help out, uh, and the time is, uh, to not complain, but to participate, 'cause we can use that help. This government runs on great staff, whom we pay, but it also will not exist without volunteers. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Your order?
Uh, any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's vote. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. This meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you very much.